All right, we will go ahead and call this budget workshop to order, May twenty first, two thousand twenty four. About forty-five minutes behind the advertised time, so I apologize for that. Lunch took a little longer than we anticipated.
However, I was through eating on time.
We do have a review of the fiscal year twenty-five funding requests as well as capital funding. And I guess at this time I would invite Rebecca up to bring us up to speed as to where we're at your date. See if we can start sorting through all this. How are you today?
I'm good.
Sorry to make you wait.
Oh, not a problem.
It's Mary's fault she couldn't decide what she wanted to eat.
Okay, so did you want to go over the capital request first? The Capitol Committee and I got together.
Yeah, sure.
So we reviewed everything and ranked the component units request. I think there's, we didn't really know what lines to stay in. There was some questions on what they should be asking for and what they shouldn't be asking for. So I think at this point for this year, they were told anything over ten thousand, so we just went off of those rules kind of in general. I guess if we need to narrow that down for future, then we should probably do that and get some guidance on that. But I think everyone had good points and and everything that they said. So with that being said, we did put the vehicles on the very bottom. And then from the top, we went with the boiler for the library. The electrical issue for the event center. Again, the event center for their park or the, no, sorry. The museum, the handrails, and then from there we went down.
Okay, yeah, and I, I think this is something, obviously, we're not going to solve as far as the process goes for this year, but something we should work on quickly after the passing of this budget, just to provide some clarity with getting everyone together, because I understand it's a little bit all over the place, and I think if we can identify a way to better handle some of these capital requests, it'll help both parties, but I appreciate kind of revamping this and sending it out, it helps.
Yeah, I know at one point, the, the point was also made that the library and the museum should always come first because they get their funding from us and they don't generate revenue
Sure.
to where other component units have revenue that they have coming in. So I think there's just a lot of perspectives that depending on who you talk to on how it should be done, but I think everyone had great points, though.
Any questions on this updated capital? Sheet commissioners? So all in, assuming fully funded, we're looking at thirteen and a half million.
Yes, with our departments and the component units, yes, thirteen and a half.
Yeah, I believe I asked you this last time, so you're gonna have to repeat it, but on the first page there, it shows the Core County carryover at five point seven nine five million.
Yes. And then towards the bottom, after I learned that we also carry over the component units capital, there towards the bottom with capital, I added that in as well. So we'll have two hundred and sixty-five carryover from the component units in addition to our, the five point seven.
Okay, so that's where the six point zero six one comes from.
Yes.
Got it. Question, comments, capital commissioners? Think a lot of it's just gonna kind of hinge upon where we're at, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just the, the one that stick, the one thing that sticks out to me is the demolition of the Carnegie Library Building. Eight hundred thousand dollars there. You know, something that we have talked about a little bit, but I'm not sure that we're really ready to do that. And that would be something I would think that we could potentially take out on the capital budget, if we wanted to take something out. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but.
Well, and I think a lot of it, you know, we can have that discussion if you guys would like today. But I think the original intent was just to kind of figure out if we want to invite anyone as far as component units or outside agencies to the next budget workshop and give any direction to Rebecca in that regard. Give us more time to study some of the numbers and the updates that we got, you know, from Assessor Divas. But if you want to start going and.
So you don't really want to discuss any line items really in, in depth today?
That's up to you all. I'm good with that, if you want to go that route.
I, I just, I, I don't have a problem either way. I may have misunderstood. I was just, I was trying to look through some of the major items and see some of the things that we might be looking at now. But if you want to do it just as a preliminary, I'm fine with that also.
And I think a lot of that is obviously going to be based on the revenue projections and where we're at, you know, how much we're willing to utilize in regards to the carryover. You know, to put that towards operations or capital or how we're going to balance the budget with that.
Right.
And once we have kind of a clear indication of that, I think we can move forward towards making any necessary cuts, but
Yeah.
I'm open to other ideas on that, but the way I'm understanding it, and I guess maybe this is before, a little bit premature, but we've got about a twenty million dollar carryover and about a twenty million dollar deficit, so give or take, if we use the entirety of the carryover, we could balance, but and roughly thirteen and a half of that would be towards capital, meaning that we're six and a half high on operations, so I personally don't like that approach because we're utilizing carryover, which is reserves essentially to balance operations. So that's going to be a big lift if we're looking at cutting into some of that on top of the airport.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richard.
I, I feel the same way. I, I don't as a, just a matter of practicality, think that the, the, the way to balance a budget is through carryovers and reserves. But at, at the same time, when we had, when we had decent surpluses, that's why we put some money in reserves in anticipation of a, a year like this, where we're going to see some downturn. And I, and I think it's going to be a short-term downturn. I think we're going to see really strong sales tax revenues over the next two to four years. Is it enough to keep us flush? I'm not sure. We, we gave our, we gave our department's guidance on a COLA a couple of months ago. I think they all took that to heart. Looking through our requests, Core County has stayed pretty, pretty flat in their request, a couple percent here, a couple percent there. Of course, a lot of capital requests, but that's to be expected with the years and years of deferred maintenance we've seen around the county. So I, I, I do think we're, we're going to have to take the time to go through the capital, set that line item and see how deep into those capital requests we can get. But I think, I think we know we're going to have to make some cuts somewhere. I would, I would recommend we start at the bottom of this list and, and start going through the outside agencies and see, and see where we can make some cuts. I, I think our outside agencies did not heed our guidance from a couple of months ago when we said revenues were going to be flat or down. To be conservative in their requests, a couple of them were. But I, I think our, our messaging last year was clear that we wanted these outside entities to start looking for other funding besides the county and taxpayer money. I don't think any of them truly heeded that. I believe boards who have sat up here on this bench have trained outside entities to not heed that because everybody always talks about we're going to cut outside entities and we never really do. I'm willing to go through them at least line by line and, and decide what we're gonna, what we're gonna fund, and I think that's probably the best place to start. And any savings we can get from there, we can apply farther up, farther up the line.
Is that something you want to do today, Commissioner?
Well, I think it's a start. The end of June's coming fast.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tillman.
I have a question. Do you know the outside entities, they ask so mu- for so much more? If we just held them back to what they had last year, how much would that give us, or do you have that?
I don't have that exact figure, but I can get it to you.
Because I, I don't think we should fund them more than what they had last year.
Well, I would take that a step farther. And
Maybe.
and say it's, it's time we start making some cuts to their overall requests, because I, I believe what a lot of these groups do is ask for a bunch more money, hoping to get cut back to what they got last year.
Well, that's budgeting one-on-one. You always.
It is, but we've, we have historically not followed through with, with our, with our guidance to start looking for money elsewhere. And I do not think it's the taxpayers' job to supplement nonprofit charitable organizations who are not consistently going out finding funny, finding money elsewhere. So I'm, I, I say we start at the top of that list and start working our way, way through it and see, see what savings we can, we can find.
Mr. Chairman, in some of the notes that I had done on the budget and looking at those that we consider currently human service agencies, last year, our budget was six million, two hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred forty-four dollars. And this year I'm showing their ask is six, six million, six hundred twenty-six thousand. So it's about four hundred thousand dollars more that I'm showing.
Thanks. Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
And that may be from the airport. Sorry.
There, there are several.
Yes, I know everyone kind of increased quite a bit, but the airport was definitely the big jump.
Yeah, it was the big one. There, there's a big decrease in Title twenty-five, a couple hundred thousand dollars there.
Well, and the airport had a lot of COVID money too prior years.
But Mr. Chairman, in the future, like, I know we, we have to deal with different accounting terms, et cetera, but we, we, just for our own ability to, to separate these things out and for the public to understand what we're doing, we're in the future going to need to separate a joint powers board where we have a contractual obligation from a, 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 a nonprofit who's just looking to make ends meet, because we, we do have some contractual obligations. We have the SkyWest Airlines contract that is an ongoing contract. We have joint powers communication, which we have a funding obligation that, that's sometimes out of our hands, the airport where we have funding obligations. So we, we kind of need to separate some of those out, out of there. So really what I'd like to do is go through the ones that were, that are a little more discretionary and work through them, work through them one at a time, and I, and I just say we have our list of outside agencies and let's just start from the top and start with Boys and Girls Club and look at their request and, and go from there.
I'm good with that. The rest, you want to go that route? Rob, I know I kind of cut you off on capital. I didn't mean it like that, but I think obviously most of us are gonna, probably all of us feel that obviously County Core is going to be the top priority and then components and then outside agencies, so maybe going this route will help get us to where we're at operationally before we dip into capital. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So let's pause on capital. And are you fine with us just kind of chipping away at this?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Absolutely.
Hurry up, please do, yes.
No, good, fine.
Well, let's do that then. Let's start with the.
One more question.
Okay.
The projected carryover, is that as of right now, or are you anticipating as of the end of June, that projected carryover?
If you look on the projected carryover, I have a month and a half left of bills, expenses that I'm accounting for, and one more payroll. We'll probably have half a payroll sometime in June for somebody that retires or leaves their employment for whatever reason, but I have accounted for that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the outside agencies, just going in order as they're listed there. First would be the Boys and Girls Club. Requested thirty-six thousand last year, forty-five thousand this year. Twenty-five percent increase.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recommend a lot of cuts as we go down this list. Feel feel free to please restrain me, but my starting point is I would recommend we fund Boys and Girls Club at twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Well, and I think it's important that we look at how many people they're serving also. Some of these are only a few.
I think if we gave them a hundred thousand dollars, they'd find a way to serve more people. If we gave them nothing, I think they would, would find that balance also. I, I, I think that's just the nature of a, of a public service organization. There's always room for more money. And there's always more people that need, need service, but we have to, we have to balance how much of that is the taxpayers' obligation to fund.
Any other feedback on the Boys and Girls Club request?
Mr. Chairman, I tend to agree a little bit with Commissioner Richards, but I, I would from my perspective, would look at a starting point. I would like to see their request decreased to what the amount was that was given in twenty twenty-four. So it would be thirty-six thousand dollars rather than what was proposed by Commissioner Richards. He, he has said he's, he's going to make some real large cuts, and I think that's his prerogative, certainly. I would look at it, if we take some smaller cuts first, then we can go back if we needed to go deeper and look at it at that point. But either way.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that?
I would, Mr. Chairman, I, I would again say I think we need to encourage these organizations to look for outside funding. And as long as we continue to fund them year after year at the same levels, they will never do that. So I, I would, I would say we need, we need to make at least some cuts to some of these entities to bring them below previous year's funding.
I see what your, your point is there. I, I can agree with him.
And, and does it need to be a twenty-five percent cut from previous year's funding? I, not necessarily. But we, we did ask these entities in our, in our first budget meeting where we, we gave guides, everybody heard the three percent COLA, but it seems like they also ignored when we said our revenues are going to be flat and decreasing. And what we saw here was completely ignoring that and asking for a twenty-five percent increase. So my initial reaction was a twenty-five percent decrease. I rec- I realize that's drastic, so maybe we can find some place in the middle.
Well, I, I we hardly made any cuts last year, and I just think that personally, I, I'm not comfortable with balancing our operations on carryover. I just, you know, the different boards I liaise to, you know, I'm being critical for those that are doing that, you know, they're utilizing reserves to balance their budget and trying to fight to help them to to not have to rely on that, because that's just going to turn around and be more funding from, from us. And so it seems a little bit contradict, contradicting that we would then turn around and do the same, and I understand some you know, here's and there's, but if we're going to take care of Core County, then I think we're going to have to make some cuts to the outside agencies, and you know, there were some that we funded more. It was a one-time promise last year, and obviously in these requests, which we'll get to. Like always, it's not just a one-time funding thing, so personally, you know, I, they make up roughly six million, I think, of the overall budget. Six point six million. I'd be interested to see where we end up with all of these cuts and with some of those that included in the contractual obligations, and then we can always go back and add more if, if so be, but I'm looking at it like we're using basically six and a half million of carryover just to balance our operations, and I, I have significant heartburn with that, so where else do we cut?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, three years ago when we asked them to cut twenty percent, they all did. So I would not be opposed to asking everybody to cut ten percent if they, if we need to balance the budget. And another thing I think we can look at is, I wish they would do it on their own, but if they could combine some of those, I don't want to start calling out groups, but if they could combine, you could cut down on management staff like hospice and VRS. You could have one manager and share the nurses, for example. I know that might not be popular, but just an idea.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to asking for across-the-board cuts, I don't like that concept. I think there are entities that can absorb cuts, and I think there are entities that can't. And I think we should look at them individually. I don't think we should look at doing across-the-board cuts if we were going to do that, but once again, just a philosophical problem with me.
I agree, because some might be able to cut more than ten.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, we want to start with island suggestion at the twenty-seven and see where we end up.
Starting points not written in stone, so.
So the next would be Cas Rock Hospital. Obviously, that one's contractually bound, so that will remain at the one point six.
But that's two hundred thousand less than last year, right?
Correct. So next on the list is Clime, Wyoming. And request of three thousand dollars.
They gave us the best bang for the buck. If anything, theirs could be increased.
We're making cuts, Commissioner.
You said to be individualized. Sorry, I won't say anymore.
Just teasing. Any thoughts on this request?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that Clime, Wyoming is an excellent organization. Three thousand dollars is not going to make a tremendous difference, but it will make a big difference potentially for them. I would suggest that we leave that.
Mr. Chairman. I, I believe that Clime, Wyoming asks us for that three thousand dollars, so we have some investment and ownership in, in what is a good program. They've never abused that, that investment from the county, and they did take to heart when we said, please, please hold the line. They have not asked for additional increases. I, I do think if we needed to find one or two thousand here or there, that, that we could reduce that. But I, but I, but I think three thousand is a reasonable ask from them at this time, so I'm, I, I would recommend we stay at three thousand on that one. And they do get the vast majority of their funding other than our three thousand, so.
Yeah. Sounds like we're all good there. Not sure where Mary went, but. So next on the list. Oh, okay, we were
I know.
talking about just leaving Clime at the three thousand. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think they should get three thousand or more.
Okay, so we'll leave it at three. All right, let's see. Family Resource Center is next. Forty-five thousand, one hundred last year, fifty thousand this year, eleven percent increase.
Mr. Chairman, a lot of these applications, we see consistent theme, and we heard it a lot last year also. And that is, we need more money from you because our COVID money is ending. But I would, I would remind you and all these organizations that our COVID money came to an end also. Again, we're, we're looking at, at, we asked people to stay flat, and then we received an eleven percent request for increased. request for increased. I know the Family Resource Center does good work, but I, again, I don't know that it is the taxpayers' obligation to continue to receive increasing requests. And I would like to see this one cut by a little bit compared to what we funded last year. I would recommend we fund them at $40,000.
Mr. Chairman, just for additional information, this was one of the entities that does apply for the CSBG funding through the Tripartite Board in our meeting last Monday. I believe that their request was for $100,000. And we cut the amount that we funded them to $82,500, if I remember correctly. So just for informational purposes, some other funding that they were getting, and we did cut that.
Is that an annual funding they get, Commissioner?
Yes, they, they apply annually through the Tripartite Board for that CSBG funding.
Do you remember just off the top of your head how that related to what they received last year?
I believe it was 100,000 is what they got and we, we approved 82,500. They actually asked for 250,000.
Okay.
We denied that.
I'd like to tag on to the comment about COVID money. Before COVID, there was no COVID money. So I have a hard time swallowing that because we got free money, all of a sudden we need to continue that course. So I don't, I don't really accept the COVID money reasoning.
I think it's very relatable to, you know, the ongoing conversation about reserves. You rely on COVID money, you rely on reserves. When those are depleted, where do you come?
Right.
And here we are. So I, I support Commissioner Richards' suggestion on that. Any other feedback on that reduction?
I would concur.
Okay, that takes us to losing my spot here. The Food Bank.
Mr. Chairman, this is a unique one because rather than just giving them a direct distribution, their funding request amount is based on we provide their director with health insurance through the county plan. I don't know when that agreement was reached. I, I don't believe we had a formal agreement to do that. There, there's no MOU. It was just something a particular commission said as a precedence. And ever, ever since then, that request has increased each year to keep up with the increases in health insurance premiums. I'm, I'm prepared to go ahead and leave that at the same level as they're requesting this year, based on that is, that is the expected cost to provide the health insurance. But I would put a footnote there encouraging the Food Bank to, to heed precedent that I'm trying to set here today to go out and look for other funding. I don't think it needs to be incumbent on the county forever to provide that full, full cost of the director's health insurance. And, and I, and I think they're more than capable of going out and finding additional funding streams to cover some of those expenses. So that this year, I'm prepared to, to grant the full request based on the previous year's agreements and, and that they hadn't received guidance to, to look for other additional funding. But I, but I would, I would say in the, in the future, I, I would like to see them look for, for another source of funding to cover that expense. At least partially.
Yeah. And with that, just for transparency, the request last year was 26,485. This year it's 27,810, which is a 5% increase due to direction from us on a 5% increase to the health insurance. So I, I concur, Commissioner. Additional thoughts on Food Bank?
I would agree.
Okay, the next up would be I believe Respite, V I R S. Yes. 104,500 last year, request of 110,000 this year, which represents a 5% increase.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend we fund V I R S at $99,000.
Any other feedback, Commissioners?
Just curious as to Y99.
Yeah.
That is a 5% reduction from their previous, from their previous funding?
There's no other thoughts?
I'm okay with that. Move forward with that.
Next up is the Youth Home. They have requested a 10% increase. Last year, 139,203. This year, 153,123.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend we fund, so we got, we have two line items here. Youth Home Operations, Youth Home Capital only. When we sold the building in Green River, we in principle agreed to use that money towards capital funding of the Youth Home in Rock Springs as they, as they re reimagine that building. And I, as I look at their request, they're using that as an excuse. Oh, we're going to have more beds over there, so we need more staffing, more funding, so we need more money. Just like every other entity, they do good work. But there, there will always be another reason to ask for a little bit more money. I, I think we're putting money into capital there. And, and, and I think they have other, some other sources of funding. And I think they do have the ability to continue to look for other sources of funding. I would recommend we fund the, the actual operations request at $125,000. And leave the capital request at the 112 to reflect the, the money from the sale of the Green River Building.
And I think it's important to note on that one too, that they, at the time this was submitted, had 380 days of cash on hand with an anticipation at the end of the fiscal year of 295 days cash on hand. So I realize we're looking at some improvements to the Rock Springs facility and perhaps they plan to dip into those as well, but I'm good with the proposal. Any other thoughts?
I'm okay.
Next is the YWCA. Last year was 238,452. This year's 259,410, which reflects an 8% increase.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend we fund YWCA at $219,000, which is approximately an 8% reduction from their previous years' funding. Again, just like all the rest, they do good work. There are, there are investments we make in YWCA that I think are paid back to the community through the, the not needing different services elsewhere in the future. So I, I do still think it's worth some investment. But I think we have to put an end to the growth in the taxpayers' obligation to, to continue to fund those. So that's about an 8% reduction from last year's funding. So that's, that's my recommendation.
Any other feedback, Commissioners? I'm good with that one. Next is going to be Golden Hour Senior Center. Last year's request was $211,800. This year's request is $227,604, which is a 7.46% increase.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is a tough one. Investment in senior care is really important. But I we, we provide their, we provide their building, we provide their maintenance. We provide a lot of the capital outlay to, to, to keep that building going. And we're still looking at a, a budget request from them where their projected cash on hand as of 6:30 is 338 days. And they're still asking for increases in funding. I don't know how to reconcile that. I, I think something I learned through the, in, in the last week is there are opportunities for taxpayers to invest by choice directly in their senior centers through a, a mill levy dedicated to senior centers. And I, and I, and I think as a conversation over the next two years, we, we need to have that conversation with our, our senior centers to, to encourage them to pursue other funding. And in the meantime, I think we can cut this request without putting them at any risk at all because they, they continue to have such a large cash on hand. I don't know where to, I don't know where to land on this one. They asked for 227. Previous funding was 211,800. Seven and a half percent cut would take them down to 196,000. I don't think it's quite necessary to take them that far and recommend a $200,000 fund, funding of that line item.
Yeah, I mean, we had that same conversation last year, I think. Can't remember off the top of my head, but it was like, it was over a year's worth of cash on hand.
Yeah, it's, Mr. Chairman, as their liaison, I have had multiple discussions with their board about this very topic. So they are well aware of the fact that we've been considering trying to get entities of this nature back into the 120 days cash on hand. So I, I would support decreasing their request from this year. I, I would second what Commissioner Richards said about the potential of having a levy. Uh, we've, we found out about a potential levy for senior citizen centers during our work on the Industrial Siding Council. So I think we have an obligation to work with them, but I would like to see our the request for them held at last year's amount of $211,800.
Okay. We've got one proposal, 200, one at matching last year at 211,800. Any other feedback, Commissioners?
What's the difference of 205 for a starting point?
That would be amenable, 205.
Chairman, I, I, I can accept that, to stick a, stick a token in there. Just, just to remind them that we're serious, that we, we do want them to pursue other funding.
And I will have that discussion with them once again as a follow-up in our board meetings, so.
Okay. 205, I can support that. Young at Heart is next. Got a little messed up here, so. Last year's, wait a minute, what the heck? What's going on here?
I think they may have used the previous year's
That's what it looks like.
application so that the 222,000 should actually be their funding for 2024.
Yeah.
And then the 281 is what they're requesting for 2025 with a 21% increase.
Thank you.
I am their liaison and I advocate for seniors, but they are making 40,000 a month now with the Early Learning Center. Plus they did get the house sold at a huge loss, but I don't quite understand why they would be asking for so much more. They keep saying they're still going in debt on the cost of the per meal. They've raised the per meal rate. So I would say the same as last year, probably.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I might, last year I asked the question of how much this subsidy was split between senior care and subsidizing the, the childcare operations. I, I kind of had, have an issue with, and I never really got a, a solid answer of what that, what that split was. But I, I kind of have an issue with continuing to subsidize what I, what I, what I think is some of the most expensive childcare in Sweetwater County. If, if we were subsidizing childcare that catered to a population who was well below median incomes, that would be one thing. But I, I don't think that's what we're, what we're doing here. I, I told them when they were here last year. I recognized the, the upheaval that they were going through and told them that I would not ask for cuts last year to give them a chance to, to get through that challenge they were going through. But I, while I do want to, while I do want to help provide for senior care, I, I, I just not interested in in continuing to subsidize expensive childcare. This request is asking for basically what are some capital funds to cover 65% of the expense of their LED lighting upgrade. I don't know if there is some longstanding agreements that would say Sweetwater County is responsible for 65%. agreements that would say Sweetwater County is responsible for sixty five percent of their capital needs, but I'm not aware of any. I, I know we do have some agreements like that, but I'm not of, aware of one here.
There is an agreement between Rock Springs, I think they only pay forty percent and the county. Cause I was shocked that we're paying so much when it's mostly Rock Springs residents that go to that senior center. The city does provide the land and the buildings and they do provide, um, I think some of the maintenance.
Maintenance costs, yes.
Now, as far as I understand, and I have their meeting next week, but the Early Learning Center is not using, they're getting the facilities, but I don't think any of their budgets coming now. In fact, their forty thousand profit is coming to, towards the center, but I asked them a couple of times, so let me work with them on their budget and they never we didn't get an opportunity to do that. So I, I, I'm not sure where that budget is.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to recommend deep cuts. I think I'd like to see a small reduction from previous year's funding. I think they're able to absorb that by maybe spreading out their, their, uh, lighting plans or looking for some other funding for that. I think it's a pretty big ask to jump our, jump their request that much for a capital when, when we have our own capital needs. Uh, so I'm, I'm going to rec, recommend them at the same two hundred and five thousand that we provide Golden Hour.
They also do, which is above beyond, uh, Golden Hour, they do provide home, uh, nursing care or visiting nurse, which is not a requirement of a senior center. But they are starting to bill the insurances, which had not been done in the past. That, that area had almost gone bankrupt, but they are working really hard to make it more self-sufficient so they can help the seniors more at home. So that's a good part.
Got a proposal for two hundred and five thousand. Any other feedback with that? Okay. Next on the list is the Conservation District.
You put my armor on here.
Last, last year's request was two hundred and twenty one thousand one hundred and sixty. They came in flat with this year's request.
I, I, I think I was, Mr. Chairman, I, I think I, I let my opinion be known last year. I've let my opinion be known throughout this year that the proper way for a Conservation District to be funded is through a, a mill levy request. I saw no attempt by the Conservation, Conservation District to even start to attempt to process, to ask for a mill levy in this year's general election. I've encouraged them to look for private funding. I have not seen that. So I think to solidly encourage them to look for outside funding, I'd like to see them funded this year at two hundred thousand dollars. And if, and if I don't see motion from them to find other outside funding in the next year, I will recommend deeper cuts next year.
My turn yet?
Mr. Thomas?
Sure.
I was on Zoom last year, so I couldn't throw anything at him. I heard him say though, he, he's going to dodge something, but I wasn't here to throw it at him. No, I, uh, I think you have a little bit of misinformation there though. The, the state association is working to get a statewide type of mill levy like weed and pest and, and Mr. Burris reported that to us. Also, they have been going to the enterprise meetings and he did get a commitment, I believe, five thousand from Rocky Mountain Power. And they, they continually write grants to continue the water quality monitoring and to work on the Bitter Creek. So they have at any one time leverage, those monies they get from us is sometimes as much as six to seven times. So it's not that the main benefit of our money to the Conservation District is the only entity that's looking out for our tax base and, and the natural resources. And if they hadn't done the work that has been done, we'd be in a hurt, a world of hurt on Rock Springs R and P. So I, I don't see them as just another, um, social type of thing. A mill levy, fine, but I am not in favor of passing a bunch more mill levies and taxes on the county residents either. So I'm going to say that right now. I mean, we could ask for EMS district, we could ask for a, uh, senior center one, we could, they're not all going to pass and I just think this one has value. I, I am fine with the two hundred because I asked them to hold it around two hundred when I attended their meeting. So that's what I would say on the Conservation District.
So you agree with me?
Yes. Hey, I say we go three hundred thousand just because of Mr. Richards. Two hundred is fine. I, I had asked him to hold it about two hundred thousand.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would weigh in and agree in the meetings that we had last year on the budget for the Conservation District. One of the points that I made was that I do believe that entities who have the ability to go out for levies have an obligation to do so and that we would be willing to help any of our entities who potentially could go out for levies. And I have, as Commissioner Richards stated, I've not seen any movement towards that. I realize that they did try and go out for a levy many years ago and it was, it failed miserably. But I also feel that we as county commissioners have an obligation. If a levy like that is not asked by the people, I think we need to take note that that is something that the people are not supportive of. And we as their elected officials should be aware of that. So I believe that the Conservation District should be working towards, um, once again, getting a levy to fund their operations. So I would agree with Commissioner Richards. I think that a cut would be warranted at this point in time. I believe they do very good work. Um, but once again, I think it is an entity that has the ability, if they can convince the public that what they're doing is beneficial to the public, the public will support that. And then if the public does not support it, that is something that we as commissioners probably should look at in the same manner. So I would say two hundred thousand.
It's a minor correction. They are working on a statewide mill levy initiative and Mr. Burris reported that and they are going to present it this year at the legislature. It's not that they haven't done it. They do have an initiative going statewide.
But they have the ability to do it on a county levy and they have not done that. That's what we discussed last year. So in addition to a statewide levy, they could do that.
I'm opposed to a bunch of mill levies and I don't agree with the fact that you're saying that because they vote against it, they don't want it. They don't understand the value of it. So that is, you know, I just, I'll end that there.
Okay. What's the spirit of debate? Are we all good with two hundred thousand? I can support that. Um, I'll move us along into the UW extension, cooperative extension and four H.
I believe that falls under one of our contractual.
Yeah, and they had the increase that a John, can you help me out with that one? So we had an increase this year. It looks like it's about twenty percent, but we discussed that at the last meeting. Some of that was they had a mistake on the fringe benefits and then obviously a little bit of an increased salary, but it's pretty well. It is what it is, right?
So
Not to put you on the spot there, but.
Clerk Lane can certainly, um, contribute if, if I'm saying something different than her understanding. But there was an option and those options we can certainly, I can, I'm, I can sit down with Cindy uh, and Rebecca and provide a list of options for you. That way you can see, just kind of like what you saw today with, uh, the airport. There's probably about, I'm going to say about six options that you guys would have uh, to where you can, you can choose how many FTEs essentially that the county pays for, how many the UW pays for. One of those options that you would have available for you and the easiest to address just right now is that the, there is a horticulture, um, um, area that you, you as a commission can address through the current methodology, which is a part-time uh, individual that the county pays for. Or an alternative, uh, methodology is UW has identified that they would pay for a educator who has a higher degree, degree of education and would also address horticulture. So you can, and they'll, they're, they'll fully fund that, that FTE. So you could remove a part-time FTE and then UW would pay for an FTE in the same subject matter. So, and there's a, there's a essentially a twenty thousand dollar reduction that would be in place for that. That would be one package that you guys could consider. The, the platinum package, uh, is the package that has the maximum amount of services available, which would include, uh, the part-time horticulture person. And then instead of replacing the part-time horticulture person with a, with one paid by UW, you would then choose a, an educator that would be for a different subject matter. So again, there are multiple, uh, options that aren't, um, that, that you're not fully obligated. You, you have about six different variations, uh, six, six different options that you guys could choose which one you thought, um, is, is best for, uh, the county. Um, so you have options there. You could choose today, um, if you want, or you can direct, uh, me and Rebecca and to identify each of those options and submit those to you guys for, for your final decision on that.
Okay. I think for today, just keep it as is.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm comfortable with the, with the current request. I think we had some discussion at the last meeting about, about trying to choose a, uh, an ag person or, or whatever they, they call the other. I, I polled all of my, um, liaison boards and, and directors that would possibly be affected and I got basically a fifty fifty answer. So no real guidance there on which kind of educator would be, but, but that's, that's at no additional cost to us, whichever direction we, we choose to ask them to go. But I, I, I think the one nineteen six thirty six is, is, is an okay place under our current demo U of them.
Okay. Thanks, John. And that brings us to the Eden Valley Improvement District. Thirty five thousand last year, thirty five thousand this year.
Chairman, I'm, I'm good with leaving that at thirty five thousand dollars of all the communities in our county. Farson Eden area is, has been the most proactive in, in setting up taxing districts on themselves to provide services. And, and this just covers a small shortfall in the, in their ongoing budget to keep their community center open and solvent. Um, I'm, I'm good with keeping that where it is.
Any other thoughts?
I agree.
I'm fine with that.
Yes.
Okay. That brings us to the Red Desert Roundup Rodeo. And eighty four hundred dollars last year, ten thousand this year.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we do not fund the Red Desert Rodeo. Last year when we asked what the funding was for, what they said was that it was used to, to subsidize ticket prices and keep them low. And I, I do not believe that that is the taxpayers' responsibility to, to subsidize the tickets of one event of so many. And I, I know they changed their description of what the money would be used for this year. Now they said they would use it for expanding their social media presence and, and advertising. But we, we do subsidize that event through the millions of dollars we provide the events complex that that funds the venue for that, for that event. And, and I, I just, I, I said last year when they asked that I, I didn't want to spring on them a disruption. I said in our budget notes later that I just didn't think it was appropriate and I still don't think it's appropriate. By funding them, we, we set the precedent that we should be funding all the great events that happen in Sweetwater County. We, we, then we should be funding the Green River Rodeo and we should be funding the Farson Rodeos. And I, I don't think that is the, the taxpayers' obligation. I, I think, I think they're, they're great events, but I think, um, they should be funded by the actual viewers and, and the sponsors of those events. I think that's more of a, of an appropriate funding line item for the Travel and Tourism Board than the Sweetwater County Commissioners. So I, I recommend not funding that request.
Any other feedback on the rodeo request? That is a nineteen point zero five percent increase from last year, just as an FYI. I'll move along to Star Transit. And they came in flat this year, hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and three dollars last year. Same request this year.
Mr. Chairman, a smart aleck in me wants to ask if, uh, they can only provide service Monday through Thursday, does that mean that we should go ahead and cut their, cut their funding by twenty percent? But I, but I know that there's reasons for that and they are facing challenges. I appreciate that they came in flat.
And I will say they're back to five days.
They are.
Yeah. Yeah, they are. You know, they had issues with, um, finding drivers really. I mean, quite frankly, that was a, a lot of their problem. Waiting on a couple of buses that have been in the works for a couple of years. So I think they're, um, going in the right direction in most things.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think my one concern is, is I've heard mentions from, from their director that while they plan on staying flat this year, that we can expect a larger increase in funding requests next year. And I don't know what larger means. But as I've encouraged everybody else on this list, I would encourage them not to become too dependent on funding from Sweetwater County. I, I, I think as I've looked through their model in the past, it's not truly sustainable. And they need to figure out other revenue sources in the future.
Actually had a very similar conversation, not exactly word for word, but very similar to what you just said last night. So.
I, I think I'm okay with leaving this one flat. I appreciate that they have stayed flat. But I, I would caution them against thinking that means a big request next year is a great idea. And I would, and I would encourage them to And I would, and I would encourage them to look for other, other funding, but in this case, I'll, I'll. My, my recommendation is to leave, leave the funding flat.
Any other feedback, Commissioners?
It's good with me.
Fine.
Okay, and this will move us along to Treatment Court. Last year, the request was sixteen thousand dollars. This year, it's been reduced to fourteen thousand dollars. Indicating a nineteen percent decrease. If you'll recall, last year, or I should say the year prior, so fiscal year. Twenty-three. Request was eight thousand dollars. They came to us last year looking to start up a. DUI and impaired driving extension to their program. So they're, we're looking for essentially startup funds for that. My recollection is that that was an initial one-time request and then they would be back to their original. Request the following year. I don't know if you all remember it the same way, but I think they do great things. I think it's a, a great foundation and certainly we got behind that fully last year, but. As with a lot of these, if you don't have a good memory, that. Sixteen thousand this year is only one-time deal, but as you can see, it then becomes fourteen thousand and. It showed as though it's a nineteen percent decrease, but um. My memory suits me that they were supposed to be a one-time funding, so I don't know if you all have any feedback on that, but.
Mister Chairman, I, I think of all of these outside agencies that we fund. This one is probably the one that for every dollar we invest, we save multiples of dollars. In future prosecutions and future. Incarcerations and, and future costs to society, but it's, it's really hard to put a dollar amount on that. And I remember that the same way you did. They came in and asked for a one-time increase in funding. And that one-time increase in funding has been, has turned into. Uh, we're gonna reduce to, as you said, from last year's request, but we're still gonna ask for increases from that previous year's request. Was it eight thousand in twenty twenty-two? I would recommend we take them back to eight thousand, the eight thousand from twenty twenty-two.
That is also my recommendation. I, I. Overall, it's monetarily speaking, not that large of a request, and so I, I reason with that, but. What you do for one tends to follow suit with all, and so I agree. I think, you know, the foundation does a tremendous job. Trying to, you know, prevent future costs, but in fact, the matter is, we're, we're down this year, so. I'm comfortable with going back to where they were before the increase last year. So the proposal would be eight thousand, Commissioners, if there's any other feedback.
I would concur.
Okay, next up is the Carbon County Fire District, which.
That's an MOU and that has not changed since I've been around. That's been twelve thousand for a long time. I was afraid last year when they heard us doing those other agreements that they would come in with a bigger number, but it's stayed the same.
As Mary stated, that's contractually there, so. We'll move along to Guardian Lightam. I believe that's the same. Trying to find it here.
So if there's not a funding request application from them, then that means we're obligated and the bill comes from.
Okay.
We're actually paying a bill for.
As needed, yeah. Okay, thank you. So. Next would be the Combined Communications Center, same thing with that, so to speak. However, last year was nine hundred and ten thousand, two seventy-six, eighty-six. Had about a six percent increase this year to nine hundred and sixty, fifty-seven dollars and eighty-two. So the next fun one is. Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport. Four hundred and forty thousand last year. One million, three hundred and forty thousand and forty-five dollars this year for a two hundred and four point six percent increase.
Mostly due to legal. They were gonna hire an additional person, but they held off on that, like an assistant. I think most of that is due to legal.
Any other thoughts on the airport? Another sobering request.
I think the saving grace here is hopefully those legal expenses will go away someday. But I think in the meantime, we're stuck with it if we want to continue to have an airport. There's no good answer on this one. It's part of being, part of a joint powers board.
And I did sit in on their budget discussions and it looked like they were trying to hold the line. It's just illegal. Totally crazy.
I believe this falls right in line with our discussion that we had earlier with the airport. So I, I don't see any way around it. I believe it is all litigation costs, so.
On the Sky West, Rebecca, oh, I just clicked out. Bear with me.
That one's held steady, but then they had to redo the contract.
Yes, I was gonna say that's a bill that actually comes from YDOT. And so it either increases or decreases every year, but it's something we have to pay. It's kinda like airtime or something on those lines.
Yeah, and it's a minimum revenue guarantee, but do we? We don't have an amount that they budget for that each year?
No, when I researched it, they just send us bills and we pay it. And the bills come from YDOT and they're split between us, Rock Springs and Great River.
Then we've got Title twenty-five, which we're obviously obligated to pay, so I believe that takes us to.
The counseling service, can they, they're still not picking up any more of the Title twenty-five types of things then, right?
Say that again.
Mister DeLeon, isn't that the issue that Southwest Counseling could be helping us by doing a better job of intercepting some of those? Title twenty-fives?
So, Mister Chairman, um, Commissioner Toman, I think, I think, um. I don't, I don't know that it's ripe to, so they've got contracts that do establish the nature of. And that's kinda some of the, the issues that I think were addressed in industrial siding. They've got a hundred and forty-one beds. They've got a hundred and twenty-four servants servicing Sweetwater County. Um.
Tri-state area.
What that?
Tri-state area.
Tri-state area, excuse me. Um, and there, I think their, um. Their board uh is looking into two different mechanisms. To potentially um address Title twenty-five. The first mechanism is uh what they call stabilization beds. And that would be a twenty-four hour um bed, which would potentially be at the hospital. Um, and the county would not be, have an obligation. To pay for that first twenty-four hours, and so that would remove that particular obligation. There, uh, Natrona County will be participating in the pilot program. For the twenty-four hour stabilization bed. Uh, and I think that. Um, uh, their board um has, ha, um. There, I think there's been some discussion and I think that um, uh, Chairman West has contemplated. Including that in the contract this year, and so the timeframe for that program to begin could be. Um. And Chairman West, uh, kinda correct me as, as I uh articulate this. Um, could be next year. Basically, you could be looking at July one, essentially of next year. Um, would be the timeframe for that particular program. As far as adjusting their current beds to, um, there was a conversation with the Department of Health. Uh, which indicated that their current beds would be appropriate as a step down from the Title twenty-fives. And I think that those beds and getting those adjusted and getting the staff adjustments, et cetera. Could be looking at, again, the same timeframe and part of the contract. As to developing a plan to include those beds for that purpose for next year. So I think both of those may be um things that are looked at uh for July one of next year. Uh, for those changes, and again, I defer to uh the chairman to um articulate that.
Yeah, so the idea behind the stabilization program, they call it a twenty-three hour. I don't know where that comes from, but. Is to kinda have a, an option before the Title twenty-five. Because it appears as though a lot of. Individuals that are titled um are then released within about a twenty-four hour period, and so. Obviously, I, I missed the last month's meeting because I was in the hallway for two hours, but. The idea to create this stabilization program would obviously go hand in hand with Southwest Counseling. And Memorial Hospital um has an option, and we're trying to see, you know, the pilot program. The Natrona County is rolling out this July first, uh, to see if it would be effective. Obviously, the idea is to, one, have a more, I guess. Appropriate option before getting to the titled. Option, and then two, that would reduce Title twenty-five expenses. There's funding that can be applied for through the Department of Health to help with the costs that the stabilization program would incur. Um, right now, obviously, the county picks up the first seventy-two plus weekends and holidays, and so. Should an individual start with the stabilization program and then need to be titled, that would be the next appropriate step. Um, but really, it's, you know, after that seventy-two hour hold, it then becomes, you know, on the state's dime, and so. The thought behind it, if it can be successful, is to. Reduce cost to the state and the county and get appropriate services for the individual, so we're working on that.
Not in place for this budget year, then you're saying.
It is not.
Okay.
No.
So much for that.
Easy now.
Trying.
It's been a long, ongoing issue. We're trying.
Good job.
Last one we have under the outside agencies is the Farson Eden Senior Services Request. This is obviously new. Uh, we did not have this last year. It started out as fifty thousand, then it was twenty-five thousand. The request is for thirty-five thousand. I'd look for any feedback.
Well, they asked me to share a couple of things. They're starting two foundations, so they are getting foundations uh set up and. One is for the exercise room, one is for the senior meals. They're looking to do uh Mondays and Thursdays. Right now, they're just doing Mondays. And a lot of the food is, um, part of us volunteer, but they would be a part of the state program for uh. Some of the, some of the funding, I'm not sure exactly how much. Um, they just wanted me to tell the county that the six penny things, because they are not incorporated city. They pay it, but they don't get separate benefits back from like industrial siding or anything else. So they wanted me to throw that out there. I think if we serve some seniors, we should serve all seniors, but. And uh, some of the other cities and towns have cities and towns, but Farson does not. Wampsetter has a city, Granger has a city, Beryl, they all have incorporated towns. Farson does not. So that's the difference.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
I come to this with, with two minds. First one is, is, is we've consistently said we do not wanna take on. Additional outside entities, and I, and I really don't wanna open that gate. And, and start funding new ones, but at the same time. Farson and Eden, of all the unincorporated communities in Sweetwater County. Is the one who actively pursues outside funding. And taxes themselves to provide benefits. Now. So lost on me that we just approved thirty-five thousand dollars to help Eden Valley Improvement District. Continue to fund their community center, who is then charging this new senior center rent. And that senior center is coming to ask us for money so they can afford to provide some of their services, which I would assume include. Rent in a seniors, in, in a community center that we're, we're subsidizing, so that's not, that's not lost on me. Um. So, this is a tough one. I believe we saved. Quite a bit of money in our previous senior center request. I don't wanna use all of that. To jumpstart Farson, Farson Eden Senior Services. I do wanna help them. I'm torn on this one. I'm gonna let somebody else make this recommendation.
I will recommend that we do not fund it. Um, like. If we, hang on a minute, if we don't fund it, we're looking at a, a cut of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand that we've done just today. Um, that's not gonna get us anywhere as far as where we need to be overall with. The lack of revenue coming in and, you know, I can reason with the request. I think it's, you know, an admirable thing that they're trying to. Start up, but here we're reducing, you know, the two centers that we've always funded. And then we're gonna turn around and fund a new startup service, and I just think that's unfair. I think it's unfair for. Us to go through and cut the other outside agencies and then turn around and, and fund another one. That's brand new. I, I just don't think that's fair to those individuals, and if we're trying to. Allow for some of these other services to not rely on, you know, government subsidy, then. Adding additional, you know, to the county budget is, is not being very effective, so, you know, it's tough. I understand that. I can reason with that, but we have to make tough decisions and. Unfortunately, the amount of cuts and the effects that some of these that we've made today will already have, still aren't enough, so. My recommendation would be to hold the line and not fund any additional.
Well, Mister Chairman, as you guessed, I object.
Any other feedback?
Mister Chairman, I too am torn. Um, we did make it very clear during our budget cycle last year. That we did want to stay away from any new. Funding requests. Um. You know, on the other hand, you know, once again, trying to look at it from every perspective. I have seen the benefit that senior centers have. And the, having the meals available for these residents would be a huge advantage. Um. I agree with you, you know, the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we've cut is not. Anywhere near where we need to be. But I, I struggle just a little bit with. The fact that, you know, as Commissioner Richards once again stated, you know, the, the people of Arson Eden. Have been willing to put tax burdens on themselves for many, many years, and, and I think that needs to be taken into account too, so. And, and I think that needs to be taken into account too. So, you know, factoring in all of those things. It makes it a really difficult decision. Um. But I believe I would have to probably agree with you. I, I think. As an overall view, I think. This is not a time where we can fund a new entity of this nature. And I would say that we should probably decline funding to it. Um, with our current financial condition in, in Sweetwater County.
Mister Chairman, I support that position.
Badly, I do too.
Okay. With that, um. That is all the outside agencies. My numbers are accurate here indicates. A cut of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Mister Chairman, um, just backing up on the subject, we, we mentioned Southwest Counseling and. And we, we did make the cut to Treatment Court. And, and Mister Dalian pointed out that uh, we do have opioid monies out there. Waiting for us to determine what to do with. So I, I would, I would like to give. Southwest Counseling and, and Treatment Court some, some direction that, that we do have those monies. And that they're welcome to come to us with proposals. Um, specifically geared to those, to those funds. Um, while I, I, I don't want to directly line item. Fund Treatment Court beyond that eight thousand dollars this year. I, I can see us approving an, an MOU with them in the. In the meantime, that would make some of those funds available to them.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I mean, that's money that continues to sit there because we haven't designated what to do with it. So. Certainly, it'd be best appropriate to those organizations and perhaps more. So with that, Commissioners, do you want to? Make a plan for the next workshop? Have more time to review components and core? What are your overall thoughts of the process as well as? Who would you like to see? I mean, do we wanna invite components before us? Everyone from Core? Looks like on our. We can have two more workshops in June, as long as we have it passed by. The end of June essentially. We got some work to do.
Mister Chairman, I think I've made as many people angry as I can possibly make today. But I, I'm well, I'm, I'm happy to stay as long as we, as you folks wanna stay.
Anyone else? Wanna chip away at component units? Save County Core for the next workshop? Any thoughts?
I think we should do component units.
You good with that, Rebecca? Okay. Legs haven't fallen asleep yet. Let's see here. Okay, so first up on the component units is going to be the Men's Complex. And their ask for last year was. Two million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. This year's request, one million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Which reflects a six percent decrease. There with mayor.
That's adding the.
That's with capital, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Mister Chairman, I, I think their operations request is in line. I, I think that investment. Actually brings a lot of the money back into our community that we're. We're receiving sales tax for and is offsetting a lot of these other expenditures that we have. I think their capital requests. Um, are, are open for discussion as we work through our component capital. Line items. Um, and I don't think their capital requests are out of line, though I, though I do think they could. And, and if we choose to cut there, there are a couple of their line items that we, we can cut. Um, but I, but I think their operations request is, is in line.
Rebecca, can you clarify? So it, it lists. The amount of the award they got for fiscal year twenty-four, which was the. Two point six million. Does that include capital? Do you know?
Yes.
It does.
It does include the capital.
Okay, so that's where they're getting the six percent is. Two and a half million if you factor in capital, okay. Keep it as is for now?
I'm okay starting with that.
Next is the County Library. So last year. You got three million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and sixteen. This year's request is two hundred thousand more as far as operations go. Plus an additional six hundred and eighty thousand in capital. The total request is four million, one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. Which reflects a twenty-six and a half percent increase.
And that's just for our match on the grant, right? The capital increase is just for the match?
No.
Mm-mm.
No, so, so if, if we look at just their operations request. The only increase that they're asking for is the three percent coal and five percent insurance. Uh, guidance that we gave them, cause they, they based that on ours. They use the county insurance plan. The bulk of the capital request is the boiler system. That the Capital Committee ranked as the number one item.
Well, that wasn't on the remodel fund.
Right, that was not, that was not.
There's no match on that.
There's no match on that one. What Christine has been working on for him is separate.
And, 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 and you'll look, we did ask them to spend down their, their days cash on hand. Um, they've done that. They brought their projected cash on hand to, uh, at. Six thirty down to the hundred and twenty days we asked for. And of course, one of the costs of us doing that and bringing. Their extra forty, fifty days worth of reserves under our umbrella is, uh, then. The next year, we have to absorb their, the, the costs we saved last, last year. We have to keep that in mind as we look at these component unit requests. And the library is one that's a hundred percent funded by us, other than some capital grants that we're able to receive. Again, I have to say, most of our component units have been, did exactly what we asked and held everything flat. So it's, it's really hard to default their applications.
Mister Chairman, just for a point of clarification, um, and probably Rebecca, this is a question for you. Um, that do the. General county agencies in their requests include the three percent cost of living adjustment? And the projected five percent insurance increase?
The agencies or the component units?
No, the counties, eh, the, the county's general fund units. The, we're not talking about them yet, like the Treasurer's Office, the.
Those include the three percent increase in wages and a five percent increase to the.
In the request that we should have shown in our, okay, thank you. Just trying to make sure everything is apples to apples here.
I think a lot of these on the component units are gonna be difficult, just. You know, unless there's a, a big change in their, I mean, I kinda look at it like the county too. Unless there's a big. Change in the operation, it's more or less, we're going after, you know, where we can maybe cut some capital, unless there's some significant.
Yeah, I feel like in the end, capital is where we're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Make, make big cuts, cause we have a lot of millions of dollars worth in, worth of capital requests.
So I guess on that. The library's operation is reflective, I believe, of the three and the five.
Yeah, I think it's a good number to start with then.
Takes us to the museum. Unless anyone else had any feedback on the library? No? Museum came in flat. This year with three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Question I would have, and maybe you can answer, Commissioner Jones. So obviously, that doesn't reflect the three and the five, or they just planning on using some of the reserves?
Hmm, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, quite a ways to go to get down to that one twenty.
Since they have, yeah, two hundred and fifty-one?
Yeah. So they were planning on spending that down. And they're also still down, uh, half of an FTE with that plan, so. Might not sound like a lot, but they don't have a lot.
Keep that one as is, unless anyone else has any feedback. The next is Southwest Counseling Service. Last year. They received six hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. This year under operations, they factored in the. Five percent increase to the insurance premium for a request on operations of six hundred and eighty-three thousand and twelve dollars. They also have requested three hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for a capital funding request. Bringing their total to one million dollars, sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven. Reflecting a sixty-four percent increase. Um. I think, you know, again, maybe this is. A discussion we should have with the other capital items. Um. But I do have some heartburn with that capital request and. I can support the. Operation request of the six hundred and eighty-three. But I will not be in support of the capital request.
Well, we have reserves of one point one, so why can't they use those for the capital?
Well, it states in there that eight hundred and twenty-four thousand of those reserves are encumbered. So that'll be the construction projects they have coming with the ARPA match.
Chairman, I, I think I support your, your position. And I, and I think that's true in all of these components. I, I think we need, we address their operations request separately from their capital requests. And I think the capital ranking is a whole nother discussion than just their operations.
Okay. Everyone good with that operation request? That'll bring us to Memorial Hospital. And the bulk of that is obviously the. Statutory requirement to fund maintenance. But their request this year is flat compared to last year. Two hundred and forty-four thousand, and that is Title twenty-five, which is obviously another state obligation. One point five two two. Is for their. Hospital maintenance, another hundred and fifty-three thousand for the property insurance premium. So I think that's pretty self-explanatory unless anyone has any feedback.
Just a question, I would assume some of our capital carryover is. Or, or our grants carryover would be our, our match. That we pledged for their last. For, for the lab project. We, we provided some matching funds for their grant. Have, you know, if we've expended those, all those funds yet, I know we told them we would hold those funds. And, and that they would have to invoice us for them. Um, I wonder how much of that is left. So I, I'm assuming some of our carryover, whether it be grant or, or. Capital is, is part of that money?
No, that's not. Cause I haven't gotten any guidance on what to do with the hospital funds. They were given a budget. But there's no notes or anything of where that money needs to go or when it was approved.
So that could be an addition.
So that could be the, for the addition, the three million. I can see where there's a journal entry that was given to them. And then they were given a budget of four million and it's just, it's sat, it's just sitting there. So that would not include a carryover.
Little more guidance?
Yeah.
More guidance, clarification.
They haven't had any drawdown on that?
No, it's just, it was put into their budget last year and then now it's just sat there. But the component units, as far as their budget last year, it's kind of complicated the way everything was done. So I don't know if that was their actual budget or not, cause I haven't been able to go by the system for the component units.
Like, I would assume with, with just a two million operations request. Yeah, we should probably get some clarification on that and find out if that includes grant money, outstanding grant money match. I don't think it would. Yeah, I don't think it would either. I, I think that's something we're gonna have to. Adjust for somewhere. I, I'm sure that's gotta be part of our. Part of some of that, that carryover, which I have no problem carrying that over, obviously.
On my carryover sheet, I did not include anything with the hospital.
We'll get some clarification on that. The next component request is the Board of Health. Um, it, it shows on the form that they received six hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five last year. Uh, this year, they're requesting. Six hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-five, which is a four percent increase. Um. That's due to the three percent coal and the five percent insurance. However, they did not receive six hundred and seven thousand from us last year. That was their request. But much like the library, we asked them to spend down their days cash on hand. So the actual amount that they received from us will be five hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. So they too went back to their original request. Um, as I've been sharing with you all, we got. As I've been sharing with you, all we got with the cities, and they are obviously participating in the funding, I believe Rock Springs is funding them at seventy five thousand this year, and Green River is around thirty nine thousand. So that leaves them, they'll have roughly a hundred and thirty seven days cash on hand by the end of this fiscal year. They do plan to utilize additional reserves going into next fiscal year, about a hundred and twenty thousand, and that will get them to a hundred and twenty days, so that is the explanation there, and I would support that. And ask if there's any other feedback.
I would move with your recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
So that's all the components, I believe. Um, we made zero cuts. But I think the bigger piece of that is going to be obviously on the capital discussion, so how would you like to proceed? Save Capital and County Core for the next workshop? Give us more time? Try and take a stab at capital right now, or what's your pleasure?
I'm up for whatever, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we, and this is just a suggestion, but we've got a lot of work to do as far as figuring out how to prioritize requests and align with the reduction in revenue that we're anticipating. Um, I mean, that was a lot of work to save two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So my thoughts are maybe give it a little time for us to study over the next couple of weeks and, you know, meet with staff or whomever to see if we can come up with some recommendations on capital. Give us more time to review any operational budgets. I mean, I think what I saw County Core did pretty flat, you know, across the board on operations, so the bigger lift is going to be capital and carryover. Which we can have discussions on after our June fourth meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I I feel the same way. I we're going to make minimal cuts going going through our components again and going through core capitals where we're going to have to make make some cuts and and I hate to say it, maybe defer some some capital while funds are tight this year and handle a couple of the projects that are immediate and look forward to better better years ahead. I I we know better years are coming. Um, but we we've got to get through this. We 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 beat this drum over and over. We have great projects coming, but none of them are paying revenue yet. And and I and I know everybody's chomping at the bit to get it, that that new revenue that's coming, but it's just not here yet. We're not going to see the fruits of those projects until until well into twenty twenty five, so.
I do have one question. What is the eight million for the industrial site? What is happening?
That will, that will be spread out as as direct impacts over twenty four months. Well, I only it's pretty hard to budget for it when you never know if you're going to get it, because they have to actually spend the money and pay the taxes on that, tho- those expenses. And we may not see that money until months after that begins. We we honestly could be into the next fiscal cycle before we see the first payment from that. While they plan to start giving us payments in January, industrial citing never works that way. We're just receiving payments from, I think, Gateway West, was it? Which was a long time ago. Industrial citing is just not that easy to to count on when it's going to come in.
Mr. Chairman, we have also seen several of those streams dry up as projects are not completed. So, once again, it would just make it very difficult, because we do not know for sure that we're going to receive that.
I'm confident. I'm confident that Project West is coming. I'm confident that Dry Creek is coming. Um, but it's, it's, it's it's not going to be on, the bulk of it's not coming this fiscal year.
Okay, um, you know, I I don't know how you all feel, but we've had discussion about inviting, you know, whomever to meetings for some additional discussion. I I kind of feel like we're aware of their services, their needs. I mean, we've been looking at their requests for basically the last, you know, month or so. I I don't know that I need to be informed anymore as to what those requests are. I think the bigger question is how we're going to balance, and I think if we continue to have another workshop after the next meeting to sort through capital and propose some different ideas, that'll help us get to that point, so you know, I I'm open if you all see it differently and you want to meet with different departments. But at this point, I think it's pretty straightforward, and it's just a matter of
At that point, we should have better information on carryover, too.
Yeah.
That should help.
I agree with you. And I I would assume some of the operational carryover are positions that we budgeted for. They just never got got filled, so I I think so, uh, uh, at least a percentage of that, I'm I'm not upset of having some operational carryover, and I I think we're going to have to at some level. I think we're pretty solid capital to capital. The cuts are going to have to be made somewhere, so I think new, some of this new, the new capital requests are going to have to be cut. I'm I'm good with digging into capital at our next, at our next workshop, after we've had some time to to stew on it a little bit more. We're going to give ourselves a crunch time, but we can handle it. I don't know if Rebecca can handle it.
I'll figure it out.
Okay. Well, thanks all. Any other comments for today? Does that help at all? Gives you a little?
Yep, I can update those numbers and then update the workbooks and get them out to you.
Okay. Well, thanks for that. We'll plan on continuing discussion after the next meeting. Appreciate your work in preparing that.
Is there anyone that you wanted to bring in on June fourth, or is it just going to be?
I don't think so. I mean, unless there's requests from any of you, but
Unless unless you want to talk to Southwest Counseling, I think I think I think our Capital Committee members can can help us through the the Capital Committee request. I'm not sure we need to rehash them all with 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 everybody who applied for them.
Yeah, and I've got, you know, Southwest Monthly Meeting next week, too, so I can have further discussion there, but
And and to fur- further clarify, for for Commissioner Toman will create and and Christina will be a big part of that. We'll create project accounts for all of the industrial citing money, and that will go into project accounts as those money comes in. Yeah.
Well, I think that's enough for today. Thanks for hanging in there with us.
Thank you.
We will adjourn this workshop.